I'd like to call to order the meeting, the regular meeting of the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury. Please silence your phones, and if you'd like to comment on any item, please complete a blue slip and get it to one of our staffers. I'd like to ask the Pledge of Allegiance and the prayer invocation to be done by Mr. Smith.
Every head bow, every eye close. Lord, if we are too high, make us low. Lord, if we are too low, make us high. We humbly ask that you open our ears, that we may hear your amazing voice. Open our minds, that we receive great eternal wisdom. Open our spirits, that we will follow your path and guidance. And Lord, open your heart, that we may feel your love, your wonderful love. In all these, we ask in your name, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge to lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Roll call, please, Ms. Kathy.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you very much. Item number four, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits.
Second.
Mr. Bean.
Yes, Mr. President, staff recommends approval of one new application and two renewal applications.
Be approved. Thank you, sir. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barti. Any discussion? Any objections? Motion carries.
Move on item five.
Item five, consideration of approving payment of all current invoices and advise regarding monthly budget to actual comparisons. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item seven, receive report from staff regarding long-term disaster recovery efforts in Calcasieu Parish. Mr. Galan? Oh, I'm sorry. I checked it off and moved on. Item six, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated December 17th, 2020. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Guillory. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Now, item seven, receive report from staff regarding long-term disaster recovery efforts in Calcasieu Parish. Mr. Galan.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate you being so excited to hear what I had to say. You skipped an item for me. Alberto Galanoff is the administrator. Thanks for letting me come up here and present an update on long-term recovery efforts. Before I get into it, I want to recognize that back here in this corner are a lot of folks that are not here to protest any rezoning. So you don't have to worry about that. They are here because they have been heavily involved in our long-term recovery efforts. They've been assisting in various ways, and they will be side by side with us along the way. Some of you might recognize Jerry Stoller because he's been here, Ms. Tanzi because she's been here as well, but Tanya Pence is here from Baton Rouge. We have a couple of other folks here from FEMA from Baton Rouge. So we appreciate them being here today to demonstrate that they are behind us in our long-term recovery efforts. We also have Mr. Rowdy Gode, who is from Emergent Method, who is also assisting us along the way. So it is really an all-hands-on-deck effort because that is what is needed to recover from what we are experiencing here today, here in our community, and will be experiencing for a long way to come. With that being said, I'll go ahead and get into the update on the overall recovery effort. So recovery is a long-term process, no matter how much you can prepare, and I think Calcasieu does a very good job in preparing for disasters. When a disaster hits, it does disrupt everyday life. So when you're going through a COVID pandemic, that is a disaster in and of itself, and you get smacked by Hurricane Laura, followed by Hurricane Delta, it will disrupt and cause a need for some sort of recovery. In this case, short-term, intermediate, and long-term recovery. We've been doing a lot of the short-term and intermediate recovery, which you'll know is the debris pickup and that short-term housing, which we also know will continue for several months into years. So we cannot just go at it without a plan, without a coordinated effort. So what we have done is we have tailored FEMA's National Disaster Recovery Framework, which they've taken over years and years of natural disasters that FEMA has to deal with across the country, and they've established an effective way to recover for communities to become more resilient. It provides a structure that is flexible and allows a community-driven approach to recovery and makes sure that the local governing entities and agencies are at the helm with FEMA, with our state partners and agencies as support to the local agencies that, again, will be there step by step, every step of the way. What you have in front of you in a nice little booklet, as well as a one-page kind of overview of that booklet, gives you an idea of what we are reporting out today as an update moving forward, which is a way to effectively move into a recovery, a long-term recovery mode in a coordinated way. So that municipalities, NGOs, nonprofits, the parish, state, FEMA can all move in a concerted, unified effort with one goal, which is recovery for all citizens of Calcasieu Parish, southwest Louisiana, and the state in a lot of ways. It is designed to be comprehensive and transparent, meaning that we need to communicate with the residents every step of the way so that they are aware that our elected officials, along with our recovery framework, are working together, and they are informed of ways that they can get assistance. They are informed of things that are going on behind the scenes to build a more resilient community that we know will hit, will get hit by another hurricane. The issue is whether or not we can recover in a quicker, more efficient fashion, and it needs to be well-managed. With that being said, we've got six key categories referred to as recovery support functions that you can see here. I won't go into each one of them, but I'll just touch on a couple that might not necessarily be as clear. But economic, for example, clearly economic was hit with COVID before the hurricanes hit. So we're already experiencing struggles economically, whether it was industry, whether it's small business. So we need assistance in getting that, getting some steam behind the overall local economy, whether it's in the private industry, the public sector, small business industry again, and making sure that our folks are educated and literate on how to do that. Housing is another one. That's one that has no short-term answer. We've met with a lot of folks, and we need better solutions that we don't have yet, but we are in the process of working on. And we need to rebuild our, rebuild our housing in a way that is, again, more resilient moving forward. So the structure that we are, that you have in front of you has a police jury as the agency in charge of managing the overall long-term recovery. Y'all are elected to represent, but you also have a parish administration at your disposal to run the day-to-day and report out to the police jury. Since a lot of that funding that you'll hear about, whether it's CDBG, HMGP, comes from OCD, comes from FEMA, all these acronyms that are hard to get a handle on, we'll be able to kind of ensure that we're able to educate not just the residents, but our elected officials at the municipal and jury level. We need somebody to also kind of manage all those recovery support functions. Appreciate Brian trusting me to be in that recovery coordinator role. Didn't put my name in there because it doesn't just come with me. It comes with Rowdy Gode, it comes from Jennifer Wallace, it comes with all the staff here that you see in administration, as well as these guys that will be involved in the day-to-day. So it'll be a very concerted effort both internally, as well as with our state and federal partners, and Rowdy Gode and Emergent Method, which will be critical in making sure that it's successful as possible. But with that, we need more people. We need more hands-on deck, and we need a good cross-section of representatives that represent our community as a whole. So you'll see folks, you know, some familiar names. George Swift with the Alliance is going to be a part of this overall effort. Dr. Chip Lemieux with McNeese Agricultural College. Our agricultural community cannot get left behind. You know, our timber, whether it's timber, whether it's cattle, we need those folks represented and at the table. Mr. Jim Rock is here today. He's been very engaged throughout this entire process. Obviously, industry is a huge part of our economy, and being a part and leading in economic recovery effort when it comes to COVID and the storms is going to be critical, and we appreciate him not only being here today, but being with us every step of the way in the planning as well as moving forward. So you'll see a lot of folks involved, but we still need the jury to be involved. So we've, you know, we spoke with Brian Abshire to assign police jury liaisons to this effort, but ultimately it will result in all 15 jurors, as well as other elected officials within Calcasieu, to be a part of the decision-making process, because ultimately, a lot of these dollars, a lot of these funds are going to come before you to be approved. And we hope that those are good outcomes that come out of these things, and we really do believe that that will be the case. Up front, the reason we are not asking you to vote to adopt anything today is because we need to be flexible. We don't want to box ourselves into a process that we don't necessarily know the outcomes of. So we want to make sure that we are able to develop a more refined, long-term recovery plan and process that you can adopt or take action on later on down the line, while also acknowledging that we do have some low-hanging fruit that we can take care of along the way. And again, it's intended to involve public, private, nonprofit sector, to make sure that everybody's represented and at the table so that nobody's caught off guard, and also reach out to the citizens, to the residents that you might not have seen listed, but need to be a part of the discussion and the decision-making process. But then we haven't talked about money yet. So when you talk about those acronyms, the tons of acronyms of dollars that come down, we do need a group of folks that can advise the recovery support function groups, that it can advise the folks that don't work in that every day, the FEMA's, the GOSEP's, Office of Community Development at the state level. Watershed Initiative is an example that is administered by Office of Community Development. We need to leverage those dollars with what's coming from the federal government to ensure that we are able to get as much bang for our buck and make sure that we're not just, you know, wasting our efforts at the state and federal level. You'll see Paul Rainwater there, who is advocating for Calcasieu and southwest Louisiana, up in Washington DC, and he needs to be looped in the process to ensure that our elected officials in Congress are able to push for us at the federal level as well. In terms of next steps, we do need to activate these recovery support functions to set objectives and strategies. Luckily, this booklet already gives us a head start on that to make sure that we are able to assign tasks and goals and objectives, give purpose and mission to each of these recovery support functions that are tailored to Calcasieu Parish. And then we're able to continue determining what the community needs moving forward, both short-term, intermediate, and long-term. In terms of a timeline to roll out, we're here in front of you today, January 21st, at the regular meeting, just to report out what we've come up with so you can take home, review, discuss with constituents. But we do plan a secondary rollout at the Burton Complex on Tuesday, January 26th, where we do, you know, expect that the public to get a little bit more excited about it. We have a lot of folks here in this room, and we can fit a whole lot more in the Burton Complex. And so we hope to have a nice rollout of this effort to ensure that everybody knows that the state, the federal government, the parish, the NGOs, all the people we just talked about are unified behind one long-term recovery effort moving forward. So I ran through all of that, and if there's any questions, I'll take them now. But like I said, we're very happy to move forward to long-term recovery.
Mr. Andrew Pont.
Yes, thank you. Alberto, you mentioned the six different recovery support functions.
Correct.
And each one had appointees. Have these groups been meeting, discussing things, or these various representatives assigned to each function?
Not yet. We have not, we have not had any of those meetings because we have been setting the foundation. We want to make sure that everybody is, knows what they're getting into, make sure that we have those filled out, and we're presenting to you today to make sure that, since y'all are the authority in charge of long-term recovery, moving forward, we'll plan these meetings, you know, starting in probably February.
Okay, so what will be their roles in each one of those?
What will be each of their roles?
Yeah.
It's defined in this book, in that booklet, but it's kind of, it's defined based on what the category is. It's defined based on long-term recovery, that's designed to be more resilient, and is community-based. So it depends on what you're talking about, but...
So will this information from each different group at some point come back before the jury on reports? Or what's the process going forward?
Absolutely. So each of these recovery support functions, as outcomes start to come forward, because right now, we haven't started meeting. There's been a lot of efforts going on individually on short-term recovery, but now that we're moving into a concerted long-term recovery, they will start to process information, meet, start exchanging ideas about what is needed in the community. And then as time goes on, we will definitely report out to the jury updates, in addition to providing the public updates in the form of the website, social media, and a lot of other forms of public outreach and engagement along the way.
One final question. So do you anticipate possibly FEMA giving additional funds if these groups say, hey, listen, we've identified this? You know, what's your thoughts on that?
Sure. So we know money's coming. We don't know exactly how much, and some money has already come for recovery efforts, and it's already being utilized. So some of these outcomes, some of these groups that meet and have outcomes will drive some of where the funding goes. We fully believe that. So, and again, that's part of that community-based approach. We want to drive those dollars to what the community feels that they need versus what the top-down thinks we need.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Galan, specifically tell me, what is the plan on cleaning out these drainage laterals? Because I looked through your pamphlet, and it does address, well, not specifically. It doesn't give a whole lot of information there, and I think that's our biggest problem, our immediate problem. You know, the rain's coming. It's going to rain, especially come the springtime, and it's going to flood. Somebody needs to be out there, I mean absolutely, as soon as possible, cleaning that thing. And for those of y'all that know Raleigh Newman, you know, when we were doing all this drainage stuff, he is up here with that Cajun accent, and he told you, you got to clean from the south and work north, and that's exactly what they need to do. If you work from the north and go south, you're going to flood somebody. So specifically tell me what is going on. I know y'all are talking about sending out a RFP or what have you, because I can't be the only person that's getting these phone calls up here. People worried about flooding.
Yep, so absolutely. So our gravity drainage districts are out there day in, day out. That is what they do. But that is not enough, that is not close enough, close to being enough to be manpower to be able to clean out the laterals as efficient as we can. So I know Alan can probably give a little bit more detail about the progress of that, but it would equate to a similar program as the debris cleanup program in terms of the roadside debris cleanup. But it would be along the laterals that we would hire a contractor to do that, based on the assessment that's being done by a contractor at this time.
I don't want to mess up your presentation, so if we can, just before we leave here tonight, if Mr. Wainwright can come up and fill us all in and make us feel good about what's going to happen here in the near future.
Mr. Landry, if it's okay with you and Mr. President, I think the timing is good. Let me just, if Mr. Wainwright could come up now, it's a very pertinent subject. Let me, I think he needs to be the one answering you specifically on the actions to do the actual lateral clearings. But on the revenue side, this is a good, it's a little of both. It's being done on its own, but that, one of the slides Berto had where the infrastructure was one of the RSS. I can tell you, that group, which is actually led by Alan, will be working very closely to make sure that we get what we can and need to pay for all that. Because as you know, it, believe it or not, it may be a bigger job than the roadside debris, which was a big, is a big job. Point being, right now, just the way the federal system is set up, it's not necessarily through FEMA. It's through another federal agency, but they typically don't have funding. So there's the effort of getting the job done, but simultaneously, this group working hard with us and our federal partners, and Mr. Rainwater, to say, how do we get federal reimbursement on drainage lateral clearing? Which is not quite as open and shut as maybe the road debris clear. I'm not saying there won't be any, but it's a different way. And so that bought me enough time to get Alan to the podium. But the revenue issue is a whole separate part, and that's why we need this recovery group, or Tim, excuse me.
Yeah. Mr. Landry, where we're at on that is, like Brian had mentioned, this is going to be probably very much equivalent to our roadside pickup as far as millions of dollars. So this is certainly going to require more funds than what we have in pocket. We've got to go out and try to get some of that money from some of these other agencies, and that's what we're working through right now. We have completed the assessment. We've identified where these blockages are at. So that's been done. Now where we are is we're in the process of permitting so it'll allow us to go in there and get the debris out of there. We've got to work through the Corps of Engineers, and there's a couple of other agencies. Fortunately, we do have a person with the Corps that can help us coordinate this permit through that process. So it's not like we can start out there tomorrow, unfortunately, because we need the funds, and we've got to follow their process. But it is in the works.
Well, I sure hope that it doesn't resemble my past experiences with the Corps of Engineers. I sure hope you have somebody there that's really going to help us, because we don't have that much time.
I completely agree with you.
They're going to pay one way or another, either through the FEMA flood insurance program, or you're going to have to help us get the ditches, these laterals cleared.
Right.
One way, I mean, there's no way around it. I'd rather just clean it out instead of having all these flood insurance claims. I would think that would be less expensive.
Well, this is a bigger task, as you know, than our gravity drainage districts can handle. And so we're talking about in areas that are very remote, that are difficult to get to. So part of that assessment process was identify those locations. We've got that done. What we've got to do is we've got to get connected with NRCS, and we're going to be submitting all of this information to them over the next, probably going to be during the permitting process. We're going to be sending them, I'd say, draft proposals and segments so we get them starting getting familiar. So in the end, we will submit one package to them, and in two to three weeks, they can tell us the funding that is going to be available for us, and we can go out and contract this work and get it done. So I see that happening this year. I wish I could give you a deadline, that this is going to happen within, you know, a certain period of time. But it's a process that we don't have complete control over, and we need the money, because we don't have the money here to do that size of a job.
See, you knew that was going to be my next question of how long, and I was going to try to pin you down, which I know you don't like me to do that. So you don't know. This is going to be months. This isn't going to happen in three or four months.
We're not going to be out there in the next couple of weeks pulling debris out of ditches, other than what the gravity drainage is trying to do.
I mean, they are working on it the best that they can. I would assume with the people and equipment that they have, I would hope.
That's correct, but it's not going to be enough.
I mean, is there any way that we can send some people from Public Works to help them in the meantime?
I shouldn't try to answer that, Mr. Landry. I'm not the engineer. It's, what's the word? It's kind of like order of magnitude, bigger. The answer is yes. The problem with that, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul because of y'all's needs, which were already spread kind of thin with Public Works on other things. I want to assure you, though, that we are, as you want us to be, extremely active in pushing this as soon as we can. I think several things have helped with that, one of which, which you said in motion years ago, consolidating the districts. You're working with two districts, Public Works and Engineering, and then our revenue partner. So it's a lot more streamlined. I do believe, Tim's, I've seen it in the last, I don't know when we did it, two, three years ago, where we got that special permitted Corps of Engineers. You're right, it takes too long, but it's quicker since we've got that special dispensation, and we pay a little more, but it gets better. All I can say, this may be a, well, it will be a much longer process than the road debris. Not just in terms of money and size, but time. And the reason is because of what Tim said. Many of these are very hard to reach. You got to get equipment by rights away. It's not right off the road. It is very time-consuming, but quick as we can. I would ask maybe that we give the jury an update when we have something a little firmer, that's more concrete. And also, I think we can give you a better idea. What is our approach? So you mentioned the south and north. I think we need to make sure we're clear, and I guess I'm asking Tim and Alan to follow through. You can't do it all at once, so how are we prioritizing? And they will do it in a way that makes the most sense in terms of how the water flows. And I think the more we keep you informed, it'll help. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Barris.
Thank you, sir. Yes, 100% need to be more orderly. The lowest hanging fruit, easiest pile to get to thing that they did on the roadside, that's not going to work. That's not, I guarantee you that's not the right way to do it, to do this situation. Mr. Newman, everybody, I mean, it's common sense. Start at the bottom and work up. Secondly, I don't want Public Works anywhere around that. This is a huge job. This is not what they do. They're very talented people, work very hard, but we're talking about hundreds of, you know, 200-year-old trees, complete trees that need to be removed. We don't have the equipment. If we do, we're going to, I mean, if we think we do, we're probably going to tear it up. We don't, I mean, we need like, you need arborists. I mean, you need tree people. I mean, it's, that's a dangerous job. This is not snagging. This is very dangerous. So, you know, I know the initial reaction is just, everybody, you know, let's throw as much manpower at it, and it'll help. We're going to kill somebody. So I'm not ever going to be for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barris. Do I have any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Stelly.
If Mr. Galan could come back up to the, I don't know, maybe he'll guide me in the right direction. The debris pickup on the state highways, what's happening with that?
I think that's also...
I will try and answer that one, although it's...
I will try and answer that one, although it's another tough one. We check on it daily here at the Parish. Obviously, it affects us. The best information I have as of right now is, for state routes unincorporated, and I would assume that this applies in the cities as well, for residential debris pickup. They have put out notice that that will continue till January 31st. For commercial debris pickup on those same state routes. Kelly Fontenot with our staff, you know, Finance, has been negotiating with the state. We have finally wrapped that up. And we have permission, if you would, or an agreement, to do one pass on state routes for commercial, eligible commercial debris. Under that program, if you would, the state went around and made a list of all the properties that would quote-unquote "be commercial" on state routes, unincorporated, and cities. They provided that to us with a, really, an address and a recommendation. One of them is that it's already known to be ineligible. So those addresses, if you would, are, we won't be able to pick up. The other classification was given as a yes, that our monitors can go to those piles and see if they're eligible. So a yes is not a hard yes, the no is a hard no. So for purposes of that commercial debris pickup, we put out notices last week, giving those commercial owners till the 31st, to get their debris out to the road. We get one pass, which I think our deadline from FEMA is toward the end of February, so we probably have, you know, two-thirds of February to do the work. We can certainly do it in that timeframe. When you look at the, for the Parish, the number of addresses we're talking about, it's not that significant. So we will be kicking into that process February 1st, picking up eligible debris on the state routes for commercial. Again, the residential is still in the state's court, they're still handling it, and to my knowledge, they're planning to pick up at least until January 31st.
For residential?
Residential.
Okay. I'm sure someone realizes that there's still a lot of blue tarps out there, houses haven't even been touched yet. What's going to happen to that debris, when it's got to be put at the highway?
Well, just in general, construction demolition debris, if you have someone redoing your roof, needs to be provided for in your contract to redo your roof, the disposal of that debris. So I realize there's a lot of construction work to go on, but all construction permitted construction work, or construction work, you know, in theory, you're supposed to have a debris removal process, not, that's the way it's, you know, we've tried to manage it through the storm. You're not supposed to take your shingles off your house and stick them to the road.
Okay, I have an example here that, I hope someone can answer this question. I'm just going to give an example. An individual whose house was totally demolished, okay, had to totally be demolished. So now, they have to reconstruct the slab as well, and lift it up five feet in the air, okay? So they put the concrete at the road, and now I'm told the state's not going to pick it up, okay?
Yes, sir.
So who is supposed to pick, what's going to happen? What does this guy do with this load, these loads of concrete? What happens to that? Now, and first off, let me just say, and if I'm wrong, someone correct me, that FEMA has required him to lift his home at a higher elevation. Am I right? Can anybody answer that question?
Well, I'm not sure of the specific thing. FEMA policies and things like that lead to us having elevation requirements here in Calcasieu Parish. To say that it's absolutely FEMA doing it, or us, or who, I'm not sure.
Somebody's doing it.
Point is, he has to meet a new elevation, I understand that. On the debris itself, foundations are just generally not eligible in these programs. And look, it's been interesting trying to understand all the FEMA rules and regulations. It's a challenge. But at the end of the day, foundations, like you're discussing, are not eligible to be picked up in that debris. There's really a couple reasons why you could lean on. Number one, the likelihood of a concrete foundation becoming storm debris and making its way to the road is highly unlikely, so it's very questionable whether that would be legitimate debris. Remember, that program is to pick up debris that was placed out there, or put out there, caused by the storm. It's not necessarily there to help you, you know, be a part of your contract, or your, whatever you're doing from an insurance standpoint, to repair your home. So it's, you're splitting hairs, and it's really just, you know, the reality is, that type of debris is not eligible for a lot of reasons, actually, but that's sort of the best example I can give right now.
Who can answer the question, who required the elevation to be raised? Who actually required that house to be lifted off the ground, what appears to be about six feet?
The elevations in Calcasieu Parish are established by policies of the police jury here, which is where we follow, that's in our development code. I mean, Wes could probably explain that better, but everyone who builds here in Calcasieu Parish has to build to a flood elevation that is, in the old days, it would have at least been to the flood plain. Now, it's one foot above. So that is a police jury policy, but it comes from being a part of FEMA's programs, and CRS, and things like that.
Right, and I understand that, I do. But the part that I don't understand is that he was required by law to lift, elevate this home. I mean, let's play, as an example, this guy might be 70 years old.
I believe we've kind of gotten off topic, Mr. Stelly.
No, I don't think we have at all. I think this is a concern, because this is going on right now. The state is behind evidently on picking up debris on the highways, because I don't see any being picked up in my area at all right now. And the fact is, this gentleman's got a pile of concrete in front of his yard, and actually, they did it themselves. They didn't hire anybody, they did it themselves. So now, I'm just wondering, you know...
Well, again, maybe Wes can shed a little light on the elevation requirements, but it sounds like, I'm speculating on one case, I don't really have all the details, but at some point, he had to meet the current flood plain elevation, which was at whatever elevation you're talking about. That was either triggered by the fact that he is obviously in a substantial reconstruction now, it sounds like, or at some point in the past, he was building a structure that had to be permitted, that had to meet the elevation requirement. So somewhere along the way, I'm not sure of the details of the case you're describing, but that requirement comes up because of policies the police jury set to keep people from flooding. So I totally support those policies. I'm just saying, those are our policies to build correctly in Calcasieu Parish. They do come from guidance and programs that FEMA pushes at us, but the reality is, we set that.
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, because let me tell you, I know what kind of job you do, and I know you're not responsible for what I'm talking about, but somebody is. And, but I do appreciate what you do.
Mr. Bean.
Mr. President, I have a suggestion, because Mr. Stelly, obviously, as a constituent, that needs some guidance. I would suggest, just as a follow-up, you know, outside of the meeting, Mr. Crane can call, I think if he could get the information from you, Tony, and help this. As Allen pointed out, each case is different. He needs an answer. It may not be one he likes in the end, I don't know, but we really need to know more of his case. And so, I would just ask Wes to call Mr. Stelly to get the info, and he can call your constituent directly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Barti, and a second from Mr. Guillory. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item eight, consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application. 3359 San Sess Road in Ward Three, rezoned from mixed residential to multifamily residential to allow multifamily residential development. I need a motion to approve with conditions. I have a motion by Mr. Barris, and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item nine, consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application. 6829 Tom Abear Road in Ward Three, rezoned from single-family residential to general commercial, to allow commercial development. I have a motion to approve with conditions by Mr. Landry, and a second by Mr. Stelly. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 10, consideration of adopting a resolution approving amendments to the cooperative endeavor agreements between the police jury districts to provide for additional management services by the police jury to the district. I have a motion by Mr. Burley, and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 11, consideration of adopting a resolution accepting the Human Services Department renovations project is substantially complete. I have a motion by Mr. Guillory, and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Any objection? Oh, Mr. Guillory.
Yes, not on this, but I just wanted to ask this. Terrick in the room, by any chance, I was going to ask him the update on the new rental?
No, he's on.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
I can have a call.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 12, consideration of adopting a resolution accepting Big Woods subdivision in Ward Five. I have a motion by Mr. Markantel, and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.